At me. And their tear gas, they could have killed me, but I did not die. But instead, I went to the occult and I told them that they cannot jail me, that they cannot kill me. And Buhari, when he was alive, that he is a madman.
Yes, he said it.
Sometimes I find it very, very astonishing that some people that cannot muster the courage to speak to a yellow people at the end of the road, where they come from, will have the temerity to question the validity of our claim to Biafra restoration and to have the nerve to question our determination. If you had any doubt before you came here today as to how serious we are, I am sure by the end of this year, you will no longer have any need to doubt us. You know how serious we are.
Yes, oh. Yes, oh.
When they came to my house to kill me with a battalion of soldiers, Nigerian air force, Nigerian police, DSS, mobile police, military police, just name it. As I have said on numerous occasions, we lost 28 men. They died because of you, that Biafra may come, that you may rediscover who you are once again and stop dwelling in a foreign land. The mistakes of the past will come to haunt us if we fail to grasp this very opportunity before us to support everything that IPOB is doing to ensure that Biafra is restored as quickly as possible. If you fail to restore Biafra, you will die in shame. If you fail to restore Biafra, you will just be a footnote in history. But if you help to restore Biafra, your place in history will never, ever be forgotten. I am in the USA. Long time ago, some men were taken from somewhere near Onisha. Their wives and their children, they brought them to this country. As some of you may know or as some may not know, they went to a place, it's called Savanna, is that correct? In Georgia.
Savannah, Georgia.
The Ebo landing, I've been there. I don't know how many of you have been to that place. I have been there. When the white man asked me, when I was back to my business in England, he said, "Why must you decide to do a critique of dependency theory?" I said, "Because I am descended from this part of Biafra. We are men, consider it an honor to be dead than to be slaves to fellow men." They unique privilege. I consider myself lucky to be born an Igbo man and a Biafran. It is the best path that anybody can have in life if you come from Africa, I assure you. But some of us don't know what it means. We have jettisoned our pride. We have mortgaged our sense of self-worth. We are now servants to those who between 1940 and 1960, we are not considered good enough to be a white man. When Igbo Union used to hold sway in the zoo called Nigeria, Igbo Union represented the finest thing. In a Biafran, it encapsulated everything beautiful about an Igbo person. Not of Anese. I said Igbo Union that built Abba National High School. Do you know that? Do you know that? If I was Igbo National, is that correct?
Yes.
Before they named it. Since that very time, Chukwudikabiamma gave us a bit of a light in Mbakwe. Mbakwe came and that light was prematurely extinguished. And after Mbakwe left, the state has been left bereft of men of ideas, men of conviction, men of very deep intellect and men who can be relied upon in terms of crisis. What we have now, our artificial Igbo men, artificial Biafrans, people that find solace in serving people that ought to be serving them. Some of you are here today because now you realize that the Fulanis are getting very closer to your villages. Is that correct? Very close. And I ask you, who do you think is going to stop them? Who will stop Fulanis from taking over your villages? It's only IPOB, by the grace of God.
Yes, oh.
I said only IPOB can, no other person will. They lack the metal, they lack the stomach and they are not brave enough to confront these very clear and imminent danger that is confronting each and every one of us. I came here in 2015, not too far from the hotel where I'm staying. I told the World Igbo Congress then to give me guns and to give me bullets that you in the USA need defending. They did not believe me. But today, every organization around the world is looking for IPOB because they have now realized that we have always been right. There is nothing I say that doesn't come to pass. Everything I say comes to pass. I mean, everything. It may sound wretched and pathetic to you. It may sound unrealistic to you. It may sound like a joke to you, but in the end, it comes to pass. It comes to pass because Chukwudikabiamma is sending you a message through us. Some of you will not listen and those that will not listen, your land will fall to the Fulanis. Those that fail to listen, they will be cannibalized in the process. Your daughters will be abducted, your mothers will be raped and your wives taken away from you. You are being extorted on a daily basis. The largest checkpoints you have anywhere on earth is in Biafra land.
That's right.
There is no federal presence in the land that the oil and guns that sustain the zoo comes from. We have now been reduced to begging for the position of ordinary secretary to government. That is how low we have fallen. That is how foolish we have become due to a combination of cowardice, jealousy, greed, envy and gossip. Because the only way a Biafran and a Nazi Igbo man, the only way a Biafran can rise up is by gossiping the brother or the sister to Fulanis people, to yell back those that doubt what we say. Should have heard what the governor said yesterday. It was yesterday, wasn't it?
Yes.
They withheld his certificate to the senate. You know, like a little child. He was jumping up and down begging for it. They said, "Are you willing to condemn your people?" He said, "Yes, please give me a certificate." "Are you willing?" He said, "Yes." The same man that have spent four years telling you that we should vote for APC in order for Igbo presidency to come in 2023, only yesterday said, "There is nothing like Igbo presidency anymore." Am I correct?
Yes.
Unano yan?
I know Yan, yes.
There is an Igbo leader.
You know, Koraosotown.
An Osan man planted in your midst to convince you to turn your brain against IPOB for four years. At last, when he got to Abuja, he declared before the war that his people are irrelevant. They no longer matter as persons. That everything happened to us, we deserve it. And there are your leaders. Before the Fulanis man came to kill me, they sought the permission of two people, British government and so-called Igbo leaders. And they gave them the godhead to kill me. Yes, Igbo men did. Onese and your so-called governors. They gave Fulanis people permission to come to Sierra Nevada to kill our people. And now I ask you this question. How many times have you heard that a northern governor asked the army to come and kill the Gokorani? As they were busy twisting all of your brains against IPOB and against myself, then we are busy preparing for the invasion of our land. You know, you're not hearing about it. Some of you here don't know what is happening back home because they deliberately stole you of that very information. There's something happened during the war. Enugu fell after only three months of the war starting. As we were fighting in Abaga, in Oka, in Onisha, as we are fighting inch by inch, every territory of land in our place. People in Enugu were going to school. Are you aware of that? They were going to school in Enugu. Yes. Because Enugu fell after only three months. People in Enugu did not know what was happening at Okiwe. This is where you are today because all your news media is being controlled by people that don't wish you to be alive, I tell you. Then what you did. There are good people. As with every society, you have to go the bad and the very ugly. The same way it is over there in the west is how it is in the east. They went through our land conversing for the prescription of IPOB, for the tagging of myself and IPOB as a terrorist entity. But today, I travel more freely than Jubril Al-Sudaki. I travel more freely than Gilatay. I travel more freely than all girls who are in charge of the persecution of innocent in the zoo. To let the world know that we're not terrorists. All we are asking for is an opportunity to be free. But the greater burden lies in your hands, all of you. Here, God, today. If you want Biafra to come, Biafra will come. If you prefer to be slaves or here, it's voluntary slaves in America. Because before it was by force, now it's voluntary. If you want to be voluntary slaves in America, you're more than welcome to do so. But understand this very thing, that the more you reside here without fighting to be free, the more you are saying to yourself and to the whole world that you are worth less than an animal. I'm telling you the truth. If you don't have any share, you'll remain in America. You will oppose IPOB. You will not join us in what we are doing. You will find every excuse that will be part of this very great movement. But as one zoo lawyer said, senior advocate of the zoo, Ozagum, he said that IPOB's agitation is historic, that the foundations of the zoo is shaken till today because of IPOB, that Fulanis have not come into your villages to pick you one by one because of IPOB, that the zoo, including Yorobas, that they are still living is because of IPOB.
That's true. Amadike.
But they know how to divide us and they do it very well, very well.
Yes.
I remember it was in 2015 it was, when we were making our offers to our cousins in the coastal region, especially the Jaws. Tom Polo went and did a press statement. He's still on mining today, saying that a bigger masquerade like Buhari is caught in him. Who is in Namakam? All these things are documented and you circle them online. You can find it if you look for it. But the same person that he aligned with has been persecuting him and his village that led to the death of his father till this very moment.
Yep.
His village was occupied only last week by the army. Again. And that is why I said to them, "Anytime you work with Fulanis, you spend yourself with that nonsense called Nigeria. You will always return in shame." It doesn't matter how long it takes. Eventually, they'll discuss you. Now, Fulanis, they come to Anambra and they kill us because Jubril, or should I say the Kabam, led by Abakiyani, confirmed, "Oh, we are not in power for another four years." Now, Fulanis can come into Anambra and kill as many of us as possible. The governor that is the chief secret officer of the state will not say anything. And now I ask some of you here, what is your justification for supporting these people that are against us? Our enemies come all the time to kill us and they do nothing. They went out of their way to ask them to go and kill us in our own land. Some of you talk about the enduring times. Some of you even go as far as trying to acknowledge them. But they are the source of your problem and they will lead to your destruction because they cannot see. And so we are coming here. It occurred to us, I think there was a bid who reminded us that that thing that Otman Danfodio said and the Sagwana echoed, that they will conquer us and use us as their willing tools or whatever it is.
Willing slaves.
That they will conquer us all the way to the ocean. Have you read it? Have you all read it? If you have read it, what are you doing about it? Tell us a good question. You know, again, it occurred to me that that is the reason why the same universities here in America that some of our fathers went to, that fellow Americans went to, they can build roads and bridges and good hospitals and good schools and beautiful airports, but the same thing is not happening where we come from. But they went to the same university. Some of you graduated on top of your classes, isn't it? And the whites came second. Have you asked us all these questions? Why is it that they can build a very compelling civilization here? That you are here doing a good job? That means there is something, we are not getting something right. We are disconnecting something in our brain and it's now time to fix it. And that time is now. You see, I don't believe that the white man is God. I believe that God is Chukwudikabiamma in heaven. That the way we are today is as a result of how we resent. We don't resent very well. We don't do things properly. We told you year after year, month after month, week after week, day after day, hour after hour, on radio Biafra, that Fulanis are coming. They will come, they will kill you, they will take your land. You said we are stupid.
It's happening in life.
And what the world said then, he said that I did not fight the war, that I'm trying to bring war to our land. And here, okay, here no other. Is that correct?
Yes.
Today, what I can say from inside the dungeon of DSS, those of them flying business class and first class cannot see it in the air. And they are your leaders. There is one reason why I love this country. Before they vote for you as a president, you know what they ask you? There is one question. Every four years, they ask the same question. If you pay attention, you will know. You know what the question is? Can we trust your judgment? Is that not true? You know, it doesn't sound that there is no sensationalism to it. So some of you may have taken any notes on it. But it's the question they ask all the time. Can we trust your judgment? Can you see things and articulate a solution before that problem gets to us? Because by the time the problem is, it was too late. No, they couldn't see anything. Your so-called elite. None of them could save it. None of them prepared to save you. They abandoned you. They asked the army to come to your towns to come and kill you. Operation Battle Dance, Operation Show of Force. Whereas in the north, where they have the foremost democratic groups in Africa, they have Operation Laffy Adore, which is Operation Restore Peace.
Peace.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
That where the people are peaceful, they are doing show of force. And some of you very foolishly support them. And today, our communities are under siege and they're even to a shade to acknowledge it. And some of you still refer to Anese as the apex sociocultural organization. A group they put together for you, I appointed who the leadership should be, tell them what to do and they do it. When it's too late, they turn around and tell you, "Oh, Nigeria can no longer be won." When did he say it? Was it yesterday?
Yeah, on Friday, yeah, yesterday.
Yesterday.
That's right.
The same man that said that Namakam is funding the Embers of War, today he has realized that Nigeria is unsavable. There's something I told him in the city room, "You cannot stop the zoo." It is not rocket science. No matter what you do, Nigeria will never love you.
At all. That's true.
It doesn't matter what you do, they will love you. I also said it long time ago, many months ago, that Tirobo will put Yorobas into trouble. And today, Yorobas people are now from Venezuela and told them, "Tirobo's ambition for the presidency will simply Yorobas." And today, Fulanis are there. They cannot talk because it's either you fight the Fulanis and lose the presidency or you are allowed to take over your land so you can be president. I hope you're following me very carefully.
Yes.
Our fight is to serve everybody. My neighbor, one of Sianim, including Yorobas people, including the TY Bandjuma that fought us during the war. His name is Teofilos. He's a Christian.
That's right.
The one is so ashamed. They are killing his people. He can no longer talk.
Amen.
You know, Wanda, oh boy. I told them that the zoo, if they don't give us Biafra, if you remember, that someone here would be better than Nigeria. I said it. Then you know when you visit and you visit them.
Uh huh. Amadike.
And before we leave the zoo, we are going to fight our way out. You may not like it, but it's the truth because you left it too late. It's your fault. You know that Elohim is very wonderful. The Jews, our cousins in Israel, made this same foolish mistake we are making today. Foolish mistake. They left their land, went to foreign lands, built synagogues, as some of you did. You build something in Virginia, is that correct? Igbo village.
Igbo village.
I will go there and destroy it. That means you're not planning to go home again, yeah? Isn't it? Instead of you to go home and see what is happening, you go to Virginia and see that houses. You feel good within yourself that you've arrived. You've done something for the people.
No.
Whereas you're contributing to our extinction as a race. The Jews survived because they had their language and their religion. They knew that before they can revive themselves, they need what is called a commonality, one common thread that runs through all of them. If it is not the religion, it is the language. You go to houses here in Elene, very affluent, very rich Jews are here. All their children speak Hebrew. Do you know that?
That's right.
Do you know why they speak Hebrew? I am a Jew, you know, why never hear Jew go ahead, man? The reason why he's speaking profanze or if added is to direct your words so that it will hit the mark. Is that not correct? I said this to you. This was in the Zuka man and nature.
Yes.
Ah, this is not okay.
Mban. Mban.
It was an Ambar way by then, eh, plan in a black ass land, is that possible?
No.
Oh, you not hear that from me, you not. Is that not true? Am I making any sense here?
Yes.
It's the Kama and nature.
Ah, Kama.
Inside you in the plan, it stays that way and it works. The Igbo made a really, that was one of the first in British. Successfully. In December, I knew how today that they said that's what they want to us. The same elders, intelligentsia. Elite. Leaders of thought and leaders of student. They abandoned a young man. Is that number in Hausa language?
No.
They abandoned it. Some of you don't know. Some of you don't know that Ebman, in time of our hand, Ebman would have looked up at the people's heads, yes? And I was a Fulanin here. Let me correct myself. Came after the war, decided to divide Ebman into three. There is one Ebman in Delta State. One Ebman in Liver State. In Hibbo State, listen carefully. The one in Delta Ebman, the same family, the same people, they are not Hebrew. The Ebman in Liver State is not Hebrew, only the one in Hibbo. You all kept quiet, do not want to hear. Instead of you to compete with the Fulanis or those actually harassing you, you want to compete with your next son, maybe your own brother, your own flesh, your own blood. And as you're fighting, in Harina, one, very grand, you fool, one-one. It just kept on saying one. You don't want to go and be like the others, that's all you want to do is to impress somebody from next year to the competition. But that person is not your enemy. Your enemy is the Fulanin. Because they want you dead, all of you. To think about our land. This hombre, people have planned to eat the rest of their land. Where is that, where is that? From where?
Are you?
Is there any other place in the house of land?
No.
Any other place in Fulanin land?
No.
Any other place in Fulanin land? I said, I'm doing what I'm doing, I didn't have a chance yet. I ask all of you to do what our Hesey should have done six, seven years ago. Which is to listen to IPOB. To listen to us and our prescription for clearing these very illness and treating us. Because if you sit and do nothing in Elay, Fulanis will take over our land. And don't joke it will not happen. It happened to the Hosa people. It happened to Titi people. It happened to the Batsa mass. It happened to the Gupet people. It happened to the Juput people. All of this profound. So don't say it won't happen to you. It will happen to us if we keep quiet. Or maybe, maybe it's what we want.
Mban.
I think so.
Mban.
I think so. Because if we are serious about getting ourselves out of this mess, starting from this very moment, we should make it a point of duty to get everybody around us to believe that our freedom is the only way out. No other way. I read the EU report, have you read it? That came out today. I've got that, EU report, election in the zoo.
Oh, okay, okay.
Did you read it? Who read it here?
I saw the.
Was it not very clear that Hebrews are stopped from voting in Lagos?
That's true.
In Abuja, in Tani. Did they mention it in their report?
No.
Did they mention it?
Mban.
Is to let you know that your enemies are more than you can imagine. If you listen to our Hesey, you will die. If you listen to those dark prophets, you will die. If you listen to their positions, you will die. There is only one remedy. One, one remedy, not two, not three, not four, one only, Hesey's remedy. And there is no duplicate. There is no counterfeit IPOB.
No.
If it is not IPOB, it is not IPOB. Because Fulanis is replicating everything we are doing to confuse and to convince some of you. I won't be surprised as I'm here talking to you. They are raising their children, perhaps to talk somewhere else. Everything we have, they have created a double. To confuse you. All the names they've called us is today haunting them. They say, oh, Basanjel, who to know, it's running with these guys. Was it the one who gave us that? These guys. And we'll be in the next store. I'm going to Houston, Texas. I want a Biafra t-shirt with Miss France written at the back. I want to wear it here.
Oh, Hamadike!
He called us Miss France. But today, he agreed with Miss France. And went as far as saying that if not for, that the Hebrew who are prepared. The Hebrew who are prepared, they are there.
Southeast.
And who is that expecting that person?
IPOB.
Oh, yeah?
IPOB. That's right.
This is from our pastor and knows something that some of you don't know.
Mm-hmm.
Because in those days, I keep saying in every time of everything that I go to. When my uncle came to US to study, they took off my clothes. On his way back, my grandmother said, they went to the way. You know, a woman, they were to be struck, not one. They brought out the outside there. They asked him not to enter into any vehicle. That our young men should not carry him on his head. They placed their wrapper on the floor, on the ground, and he was walking until he got to Sadas Company. That is who we are in those days. In those days, if you come first, second, or third, they got last. It doesn't matter who you are, anybody you see along the road, even a partner in Tapa, will give you something. Because you did well. Because as somebody that grew up in the village. I'm a good girl one when a new child is born. You know, here they call it to exit baby shower. Our baby shower is down outside. Is it down outside? Your grandmother will speak from her village. We start to learn each other. Is that not correct?
Oh, Kamil.
I love the law, announcing your birth. Now, what you know, I don't know, the whole world will know. Until she gets to the village. And then, your father's mother or aunt or whoever will take over. Everybody will rock out there and there will be joy and gladness. Is that correct?
Yes.
These are some of the values you have lost by coming to America. I'm not saying that coming to America is not good, or those of us that make the mind that is not good, but it's for you to go and learn something and bring it back home. Only then will the Europeans or the Western world respect you. Japan did it. Today, Japan entered here peace and free, is that correct?
That's right.
Is that correct?
Yes.
I am sure that Malaysia took care as well with very minimum force. Singapore can come here. But the Republic is true, was weaker than Singapore.
That's true.
You don't know that? Or is it Dubai and not the rest of them? Ask yourself this question. Why is it that other parts of the world are growing only Africa, Black Africa? Every blessed day, it's going backwards. The way we reason is very, very bad, you know? And we end up feeling sorry for ourselves every blessed day. And that is why we are here. And the only reason I'm saying is not very, okay, okay?
Mban.
Where to be? If you celebrate death, death will come. Do you know that? Do you know? I wonder if they will say, uh, it will probably happen. The same thing with death. Ain hapu pokonaga around here, it's not done that way. Seeking kingdom of heaven first. That kingdom for our own purposes is Biafra. Wants to seek Biafra first, every other piece will add to the good story.
We have spoken.
Then the world can respect us. Humanity can respect Biafra. As I said, it's been two days ago. I went to a very important meeting. They asked me, why do you want Biafra so desperately? That freedom for Biafra means the destabilization of West Africa. And I asked them, who was destabilized when Soviet Union collapsed? They couldn't answer me. I asked them, who was destabilized when the Slavs had collapsed? They could not tell me. Who was destabilized when East Timor was carved out of Indonesia? Who collapsed when Albania and Kosovo became independent? I must say to the man, if nothing happened to Soviet Union, a nuclear power, nothing will happen to us in West Africa. I'm telling you this because this is the argument they prefer at your state department. You know that Zakaria Mohammed, that's her name, isn't it? That lady, the deputy UN chief. Zena, tell you that, Zena, is that Mohammed?
Zena Mohammed.
Thank you. Do you know that Fulanis people are working for the freedom of the Saharab, is this? My goodness, I can't even pronounce it. Saharab, is that right? Imagine a bookie talking about self-dedication. And it's public, they're not hiding it. They said we will do everything within our powers to make sure that those Fulanis there and they are free, they have practical conflict. And then they go and they convince people for a matter to attack IPOB, asking for your freedom. The freedom to control your destiny, your own resources, is your own land. The freedom from being killed every blessed day in the north. I don't have any projector. I would have shown you a picture of people that died, they were arrested. Among the Papa.
Oh, Apapa, oh, yeah. Yeah, the container.
Container for the.
That's right, mm-hmm.
They died on the spot.
On the spot. The container fell.
And somebody said, why?
Bad road.
It's not just the Jew. It is the way that black people reason. It's not the fault of Nigeria. Even in 1945, when they killed us in Just, the first killing in Just in 1945. We had Enamde Azizi, where one of the most learned, intelligent, gifted, every. A who 1945, 1947, 1953, 1959. Consistent killing after killing after killing after killing. And you think they will love you? I don't understand it. Who says so? Failure to contain the revenge is what you're witnessing today. And they said we should support with our double balance.
I know.
Have you seen the videos where they are telling their wives and their children on how to shoot every person? Have you seen it? Did you ever prepare to call for the arrest?
No.
Did our Hesey call for the arrest?
No.
Did Hebrews not call for the arrest? Then just because I came here to tell you to prepare for what is to come. They said I should be killed. And you know Fulanis are very clever. Because the British advised them about it. Every time they know that IPOB is not behind you, you are wrong. They disgust all of them. The only person they found in streets to use something to is the father here. Why? Because they know IPOB is with him. You think Fulanis are silly? They have looked at one of them. Without IPOB support, you are not. Absolutely not. That is why all of you here gathered today must rise up and do the deed for. What is that deed for? Not only are you going to join IPOB. Some will not, I don't want to beg them, I'm ready, some will sell their houses. Because when it happened to the Jews, they were begging for their land, they were begging for their sheep, their sons of school, to allow them to go. They were begging. It is up to you. Only I was in Airballo, my Hesey. It's up to you to support the emancipation of your people if you like. I can't thank you. Biafra doesn't belong to me. Does not belong to, in fact, my village and my father is the Hesey, doesn't even belong to him. It's for you to do it as you please. If you want to be slaves for life, that's a value to you. But as for me, and this is very familiar with IPOB, we have chosen freedom. And that freedom must come. That freedom must come.
Amen.
That freedom must come. How many Americans are pensioners in the zoo? How many white Americans are in the zoo collecting their pension? Huh? Huh? You know, in Germany, as an African, you know, they ask you, um, is it not, don't you think it's time to go home? Am I correct?
That's true.
You have your passport home. Very soon, don't you think it's time to to go home? I don't know how some of you live in this shade. It's so familiar. We believe in life after death. And if after this life, you succeed in making it to heaven. you succeed in making it to heaven, that is assuming that you did not gossip to Goodwill and wear rice on earth. You make it to heaven. And they say to you, all that oil in Oka. The black and white man going there going. All the gold you know has here. All the oil, in whom we are, that we live. All the olive you have in Ukuta. All the oil, the gas you have in Onaji, what did you do with it? You said, oh, uh, full army came and took it. Eh? Okay, directly take to them. Now, they imagine, now, and now, put it here, and yet, they feel like that God in heaven gave you a gift, and the full army took it from you. Everybody wants to be recognized and acknowledged. If it means going to their houses, knocking door to door, they go and notify them that Biafra is coming. And let me also make it very clear. You know, you know, I like trouble. Onumanga. Eh? I said it before, no? Um, no, I'm best before, what they can, below, I said one. You don't know that? Eh? It's not good to stay without enemies.
That's right.
You don't know that? Your body, if you give birth to a child, that child doesn't suffer from childhood illness of any type, no headache, no malaria, no nothing.
No diarrhea.
The dead disease will come later and die later.
That's true.
Because the immune system is not well trained to handle trouble. Every time that IPB is the deadliest disease, I said trouble stop here. So every day we build a new system, isn't it? Every blessed day, if there is no trouble with that one, nothing United States people more than trouble. True or false?
Okonmal.
What did Iran do to America? Is America not looking for their trouble? Oh, we're here, not even American, eh? Then you know, demban, I still not done, you still not, okay, I do, I do, you know. In Kenya, walk up to you, you did a microwave. By microwave, but can't you buy it there? Biafra, I put it all up here. What we are asking for is not a Biafra for Nambakan or any other person. It is your Biafra. It belongs to you, your own land. Some of you, by the time you go home next time, your village may no longer exist. Unless you rise up today to support us, the full army will take over our land. And all those people that you call your elders or your leaders or intelligentsia or elite or leaders of thought will be no way to be found. Because it was full army that appointed all of them. How many of full army people come to your land to come and collect power? Then you all wonder that the only way you can climb into office is by casting as passions against your own people, by denigrating your own people, by insulting them. Before full army people, as uh, Abora was, I have just done and many more like him. Does anyone here from Nigeria these days? And two days ago, all those babies are going to Azuma, amazing, think over, you know, they train them young, to be corrupt. Some of you may not know this. They blend with the cabal to act for security to the government, begging. We beg you, please. In a land that is not the Azizi, where is your, single-handedly? You are begging for a night, mama. Oh, please, we beg you, be more security to the government. And the latest was announced. At the one, they are several slaves for example. Now they're security to the government. Do you know why they did that? So when they go to Europe and they say that Nambakan and this are people that are stopping us a lot about um, freedom, they will think, oh, but these are their people. They're dead dust for personally, they're giving to them. Anyway, who's there much, hard hitting, I was never anymore. Your land is gone. Oh, oh, I go, they just march for the back, maybe, eh? What is today's date?
Fifteen, June, twenty nineteen.
Maybe, eh, is it? Of course. The same thing happened in Canada, surprising, I'm sure. The same day, they aggressed our people here in this city. Was it five years ago? I'm telling you again today. If you don't take time, Biafra will be gone. Then with your help and the grace of God, I think Biafra will respond in our time. IPB! 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 One family.
IPB!
Nambasun.